Sixteen, road call please, Kathy.
Um, Joe York absent, Paul Rabs.
Here.
And David Key absent, David Key.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Godden.
Here.
Robert Carmichael.
Item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. We have one tonight, it's recognition by AARP of Bucksport as an age-friendly community. Susan.
Um, on the 12th of September, I attended a meeting in Hollowell of communities that had been granted age-friendly status designation by AARP. And there were members of the Senior Resource Committee from, who also attended, Donna Carter and Pearl Swenson attended. And the town received its official document stating that we have attained that status. We all had an opportunity, each community, to say a few things about why our community was special and what we did to attain this. I'm pleased to note that after I spoke on behalf of the town, I had a number of people who asked for my card and who wanted to contact Bucksport about things like the Senior Resource Committee and the walking the downtown and all the things that we've been doing recently to look at accessibility issues for the town. So, there's a lot more work to be done. This is an ongoing designation. It has a work product that you, we have to move forward with. And the Senior Resource Committee is our oversight committee for this, for the town. So they will be, as I've said before, holding our feet to the fire to make sure that we do the things that we've committed to do moving forward.
Thank you. Item four, consider minutes of previous meetings. We don't have any at this time. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents, first one being weekly construction summary for sewer treatment facility. Susan.
We have three of them here, September 9th, September 16th, and September 23rd, because it's been three weeks since we had a council meeting. And these reports itemize the work that's been done between September 5th and September 26th of this year on that ongoing construction project.
Okay, we also have, the next one is Oliver Associates, waste water treatment plant construction meeting, minutes?
On September 14th, we had the monthly construction meeting for this, at which time we generally review the bill for the month from the vendors. This particular meeting, we also, Councilor Rabs attended the meeting and we had a tour of the facility afterwards, the whole thing, and it was a very interesting tour and it was a eye-opening. The building with the air handlers on top, if you go in, it's about eight stories down. So it's a very, it's a, it's a long, it's a great Stairmaster workout if you're doing that, which is what we did that day. But it's, because of, it's a gravity-fed system, in order to get low enough to feed off the pump station, it's that far down.
Okay, item C is letter to Maine Maritime Academy in support of Maritime Training Institute. Susan.
The Economic Development Committee, I believe.
Yes.
Met and requested that the Economic Development Director and I get a letter together to Maine Maritime Academy in support of their Training Institute project, because the school is in the latter stages of determining final location for that institute. And so, I, we prepared that letter and ran it by the committee members who had input into it, and it went out last Friday.
Thank you. Any questions on any of those items?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What other locations were they looking at, though, this and the rest?
I don't know the answer to that. That wasn't provided. It's just my understanding that there's more than one site under consideration.
Any other questions on any of those? Okay, item six is new ordinances to be considered or introduced. I don't believe we have any tonight.
No.
Okay. Item seven, discussion items, managers clarification or directions or council discussions and/or inputs on issues. First one being assessors request to begin a reeval process. Susan.
Our assessor is here, over here, okay, couldn't find him there for a minute. Several months ago, the assessor met with the Finance Committee to talk about the upcoming 10-year anniversary of the last reeval for the town. And he discussed with the Finance Committee potential ways to move forward with that revaluation. And the options are to do it in-house with some assistance or to put out an RFP for an outside firm to do that work. Traditionally, the town of Bucksport has done it in-house with assistance. The assessor has had a part-time individual help them for a period of time to get to, through that process. The goal is to have the reeval done for the commitment as of April 1st, not commitment, the assessment as of April 1st, 2018. And so, there's a memo here from our assessor talking about a process and a total cost. At the time the committee discussed this, the recommendation was to use money from fund balance to pay for this as a, because it's a once every 10-year event. And the price tag for that over this almost two-year period would be approximately $40,000. But in order to have it done by April 1st of 2018, the process would have to start this fall. And so, it's on here for discussion to find out if there's any objection to us moving forward with that Finance Committee recommendation to begin work on the reeval with a part-time assistance, assistant at a cost for the overall thing not to exceed $40,000.
Would you request a quote, so we can...
But the estimate is based on a rate per hour times the number of hours that a person would be working for that period of time.
That's required by law every 10 years?
That, the standard is 10 years. There are communities that don't do it. What happens is if your valuations get out of whack with current, when you do it eventually, there's a big discrepancy, huge swings. And people tend to get much more upset if things aren't kept current than they do if they're done in a more timely manner. And the other thing that happens is that new, that new investment pays a larger share of the tax burden than homes that have been there for a long time or verse, depending on when a reeval was done. Looking at something every 10 years for that purpose is to make sure that values are equitable across the board and that something that hasn't been looked at in 10 years isn't carrying either more or less of its own weight than it's supposed to, in terms of the distribution of assessment. And our assessor can probably address this much more eloquently than I am, but if anyone has other questions, but that's the...
My, I guess what I'd like to make sure we clarify is that over the last 18 months, we've been hit pretty hard with tax increases and everything else. And when people hear assessment, the first thing that goes through their mind is all of a sudden, my house is going to be valued more than what it is now and my taxes are going to go up again. There's a question for you, Jeff.
Thank you, Sue, you did a great job. Yeah, typically when you do a reeval, it's because the town realizes that, you know, in a normal economy, you have a lot of inflation happening and the values of properties get behind the actual market values. But when you, recently, when people have done revales, that hasn't been the case. I've heard of plenty of towns spending money to do a reeval and they actually lost value. So, I don't know what to say, what to really say what's going to happen between now and April 1st, 2018. Right now, we're at about 100%. So likely, just like what Sue said, it's called an equalization program, so that some may go up and some may go down to try to make it more fair for people, because over passage of time, you know, the inflation and depreciation act differently on different properties. So after 10 years, it's time for an adjustment. So people may be nervous about their values going up, but that's not necessarily the case. And it's just, it's a matter of trying to make everything fair and so just taking a look at those things.
And I think one of the things I want to make sure that we understand is that, I think with Susan's guidance, I think we've done a really good job of keeping the tax mill rate where it's at. With the valuation correct or wrong, the mill rate may adjust a little bit, but the money that we have to spend still has to come from that one spot. So we may, that's where you're talking about the up or down from certain places, correct?
Right.
Is that the best way to confuse it?
Yeah, so the budget is what it is, and the pie gets divided up based on the valuations of properties. So the reeval is to make sure that those valuations, the slice of pie is the right size for every owner.
Do you use comps the same way real estate appraisals work? You have to find comparables for types of houses and all of that?
So, there are people that think we have to do that for every property, every 3,000 properties every year, but no, that, an assessor does what we call mass appraisal, and it's a cost approach that is adjusted to the market. So our trio program has a bunch of information about every property and it runs through all of these mathematical equations. And it's all balanced to the market. So that's when you do ratio studies by taking actual sales, arms-length transactions that are, you know, out on the market, and you compare them with the number you have on for a, for evaluation, and you see how those match up. So we're pretty close to 100% on the average. It doesn't mean that they're all at 100%. There may be some that come in at 80 and some at 120. I mean, we're more like 90 to 110. But, you know, if you're the one that's too high by 10%, you'd rather have it, you know, adjusted. So that's what we're working on, is trying to get everybody as close to 100 as we can.
And I think the best thing that we can do as the town is to make sure that we keep people appraised on what's going on in the process, because you don't want somebody knocking on your door and saying, hey, by the way, here we are for your assessment, and you're like...
Right.
And we don't have the process laid out so people know what's going on.
And the other thing I wanted to say about, the agenda item says, "Begin a reevaluation program." Really, I've been working on it since I've been here for five years. It's a gathering of information and trying to keep everything updated. I've got more than 20,000 photographs now of the town, which I had none to begin with. So it really gives us a lot, a lot to work with. So if we, you know, if we adjust something in the computer and it changes everybody's values, you'd like to be able to look at it and say, does this make sense? Do we have enough information to make that decision? And you have, so you have to be able to defend whatever changes you make. So that's the idea of having, you know, the information.
And the other thing that the process allows for is, if anyone's property is revalued, they get a notice that says what it is. They have an opportunity to call, have another inspection and a discussion that this time period allows for a lot of back-and-forth interaction. The other thing that happens, if, unless you do something crazy with your budget, if the budget remains the same and the value goes up, the mill rate goes down. That, that's the other side of what occurs in terms of that, so that your adjusted bill doesn't necessarily go up.
Right. Okay. What question?
But if the last valuation was done at a time when values were extremely high, and this has happened in many communities, the crash of 2007, '08...
It's right about the time that this next one's coming in, so...
Well, you know, it, but, but it hadn't crashed until after your reeval was done. So there may be adjustments. You know, I'm not saying your community couldn't lose value in a revaluation, because it could, depending on what current sales are compared to then.
I think it's just good that we're all in front of it and I appreciate you coming forward. You know, granted, we need money for it to get it started, but again, people knowing the process is coming.
I understand you have to, it's like this 90 to 100 or 90, 105% or whatever ranges. Residential, commercial, and industrial all basically have to fit within that little parameter, right, on values, so that everybody is treated fairly.
Right.
To true value.
Yeah.
That's the intent?
Yes. And it was very important to the mill to know that we were near 100%.
Right.
Because they were being valued at 100%.
Right.
And they didn't want to be carrying more than they needed to.
Right.
And we still have a power plant that's in that, in that. So it's important that we don't let it sag down.
Right.
But it's, that's not the problem we have now.
Right.
It's a matter of equalization. And just in case, you know, if someone asked about the cost, if you did go and hire an outside firm to do a complete revaluation, we're talking six figures, probably north of $200,000 to do that, so. You know, and we get a pretty good deal and plus, you know, when you do it in-house, you can be confident that people know what they're looking at. They, you know, it's all local knowledge is applied, so.
Are we actually taking a vote on this tonight or just seeking a recommendation?
Recommendation, and I'll put it on your next agenda for action.
How's the council want to proceed?
Well, I think something that needs to get done, and I think Jeff answered the question, that $200,000 compared to 40 is a no-brainer.
Well, I think somewhat, staying somewhat consistent, whether it's 10 years or whatever it ends up being, is better than just, you know, having some random, and then down the road, we do the rebound. People's taxes go way out of whack. Or, I suppose they could go down too, but not likely.
All those in favor of bringing this to the council at the next meeting? All those opposed? I'm going to bring it to the next council meeting. Okay, item B being waterfront ad hoc committee minutes from 9:22:16. Paul.
Hi. The, we had our ad hoc group meeting. The, it was a, key people that attended the meeting were Mike Ormsby, Harbor Master, Dave Grant, Assistant Harbor Master, and Bill Chandler, Marina Manager, and Rich Rotella from Economic Development. I chair the committee. We've been able to build a mission statement going forward that was reviewed that night. And I'll get right to the bottom line. At the evening's end, with a lot of candid conversation and so forth, we established five goals in this order, one being the, to look at the expansion potential slash small harbor grant money. There was different discussions that we thought we'd already applied or we hadn't applied, but to try and get small harbor grant money for an engineering study, recommendation on port, infrastructure, review existing and future technical issues, legal, commercial, financial elements, the fact that we have Verona across the way and we're over here. There is a, basically, you think of it as an imaginary line and we have to know where we can go, where we can't go, look at the condition of Marina piers and the town dock pier and so forth. So there's a whole range of things. So that was item number one. Item number two is to take a look at the rates and the revenue generation. Bottom line is we want, bottom line is we want to run like a business. The Marina rates did have some room to move, and we were able to capture some documents from other Marinas as a starting point to look at. And we've decided also to look at future moorings as a revenue potential, because that's all part of voting. So we have a recommendation already for Marina rates, which is later on in the agenda to take a look at. Item number three is to look at a new model to consolidate operations under one full-time salaried manager to keep the books, with four to six part-time people reporting under him. Item number four was to reduce the MRO costs, that's Maintenance Repair and Operations, to consolidate multiple department operations, eliminate redundancy and overlap, listing, we've already received a listing from the different departments and managers, the listing of the support requirements that, to take a look at to do that. And item number five is to stay with the recommendation of the town manager to have an enterprise account, that is budget consolidation, multiple departments and budgets, multiple line items consolidated all under one. So those are the five things we've agreed on. We don't have another meeting scheduled at this point. I've taken on that when Sue and I have an opportunity for a car ride together or whatever, to chat about these different things and take a better look into budgets and overlaps and things like that. So that's pretty much a summary. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the public?
Yes, Jim.
Paul, when you talk about part-time people, you talk about part-time people that'd be working in the Marina or along the waterfront?
This, this would be multiple departments.
Could that's not from the highway, something over there?
Yeah, we don't quite know that yet, again. We're going to look for some guidance.
Tell me when you get back from the ride, okay?
Yeah. The reason I say we'll go, we have a MMA meeting next month to go to, so maybe we'll have each other's attention for a few minutes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to answer, how well do the Marina do?
The Marina, since it was purchased in 2013, '14, through this part of the year, in the current year, is about $48,000 ahead of revenue over expense, based on the current year, plus the accumulated from the last two. The difficulty with that is that some of, that's just the Marina. Let's just draw a box around that. It does not cover the cost of maintaining the waterfront walkway or the town docks or that expense. That, that expense has been traditionally taken from, partly from Public Works, the highway, partly from recreation. A large part of recreation's budget has been devoted to that. So, so the Marina itself, which when purchased, it was my understanding, the goal of the council was to have that entity not draw on taxes, and it doesn't. But if you add up the total cost of maintaining this entire waterfront, we'll say from Main Street back, because we have the flower poles and the, all that kind of stuff, you would, you would do a lot of damage and probably eat up that $48,000 in a big way. But the Marina itself, for what, for generating, but it also has support, the Marina's support for putting in those docks and those things, that, that involves highway department employees being paid out of highway, not out of Marina, you know, that, so...
Yeah, there are already different departments that have budgets that are taking care of some of these other items you just described.
That's right.
So there may in fact be overlap that we can, we'll look to see if we can do anything about that overlap. And I guess another way to answer your question is, the Marina was booked out last January for the summer season. And that's why we're so anxious to get the Marina rates set now, so the boats that are leaving and going to warmer weather waters or being taken out of will know what they have to look at for next year, and hopefully we'll have the same success and be booked out again this January.
Any other questions? Not, we're going to go on to item, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a waiting list for slips? Is it booked up in January, but do you have a lot of...
There's a lot of transient boats. I'm not sure we have a waiting list, but it gets pretty crowded at times down here. And that wonderful pleasure yacht that came in, that $58 million, 177-foot of it, it was encouraged to leave in a timely manner, because we had boats coming in that were already committed to the dock.
I think, excuse me, I think what Bill Chandler said was that there's really not a waiting list, because if people need a place to put their boat, if here isn't available, they go someplace else. So I don't, I don't think a waiting list was the right, because I asked the same question. I don't think a waiting list was the right way to put it.
Yeah, but we, again, no waiting list, but we wore a fall and we get a lot of transient boating.
When we talk about waiting lists, we're talking about waiting lists just to stay for tailoring or...
Like Green Bay pack or season ticket, for lack of a better example. Not, not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions?
So the general feeling is if you build additional slips, they will come?
We were also guided by the Harbor Master and Assistant, and the Marina Manager to not go too fast, to do it at a moderate rate. If we do go that way, that would be the part of the engineering study too, to see if there are any physical or legal barriers that we may be, in fact, limit. We don't know.
Thank you.
I guess we don't know what we don't know.
But what I talked about was that you don't want to be overbuilt, so that you look like you have a lot of empty slips out there when people are coming in, so it's a kind of a balance, how fast to go.
Good questions, thank you.
But you want the trains, because that's where you make your money. The gas, yeah, that's what he's...
Any other questions? If not, we're going to go on to item C. Item C is Economic Development Committee meeting, update from 9:20:16.
Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, and Town Counselors, I wanted to update you on the Economic Development Committee meeting, which took place on September 20th. First, the group unanimously decided to have a letter of support on behalf of the town drafted to Maine Maritime Academy. This letter is in support of the Mariner Training Institute for a location at a parcel of land on the Ain property. This letter was addressed to the President, William Brennan, and the Academy's Board of Trustees from Town Manager Susan Lassard, and was dated September 23rd, 2016. Second, in conjunction with the RSU-25 School Board meeting, the committee was made aware of a $25,000 grant that was granted to the RSU-25 from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation. The request was put through by Evelyn Bowler, she's the Curriculum Coordinator for RSU-25. This grant enables to put three to four new books in the hands of all the middle school students in RSU-25, and to have authors come in to speak to the students about the importance of reading throughout their lifetime. $5,000 will go towards the speaking engagements, while $20,000 worth of books will be purchased from book stacks. The total value of the books is worth $26,666. And thanks to a wonderful discount from owner Andy Locker, the cost of the books will come to $20,000. Next, we have five workshops in town on the essentials of small business, which began on September 20th and will run through October 18th. This program is in conjunction with the SBDC, or the Small Business Development Corporation, and New Ventures Maine, and is funded through a cooperative agreement with the US SBA. The workshops are being held at the Jewett School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and have a capacity to hold up to 30 participants. The first course, Basics of Starting a Business in Maine, was held on September 20th and had 26 participants. The second course was this past Tuesday, and it was the Essentials of Business Planning, and we had 19 participants. Next week's course is Marketing Your Business. Bucksport Heart and Soul Group held its most recent block party on September 18th at the Rotting Gun Club. Approximately 75 people were in attendance on the Bucks Mills Road. There were great stories shared by local residents in this section of the town. The next block party will be held on October 16th at the Bucksport Golf Club, also beginning at 4:00. And the last block party that is planned will be held on November 13th at the Edward K. Area Center, beginning at 4:00. The public is welcome to attend each of the remaining two block parties, even if they don't live in that section of town. The handicap spa on Elm Street has been relocated away from the utility pole, with thanks to the Public Works Department, Fire Department, Police Department, and the Code Enforcement Officer with their input and assistance in making this happen. Next, I'd like to inform you of an event that will be happening on October 7th, and if I may, I do need these back. It's called Coffee with a Cop. It's a national program. This will be held on October 7th at four locations in town. The event will start off at McDonald's and run from 7:00 to 8:00 AM. Then they'll be off to Dunkin' Donuts from 8:00 to 9:00. They'll then be moving on to the local variety from 9:00 to 10:00. By the way, Jess Carter will have her homemade donuts available. And we'll be ending at book stacks from 10:00 to 11:00. This is an event designed for residents and police officers to share coffee and conversation. There are no agendas or speeches. It's a time to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know the officers. Special thanks to Leslie Wambacher at the Chamber of Commerce for her help in designing the block. the flyers. Next, I do have an intern working in the office with me this semester. Josh Gagan, who is a senior at Bucksport High School, began working with me on September 6th. Josh works one hour and 15 minutes a day, four days a week, and has been working on a project since he started that will prove to be beneficial for the new spillment software located at the Public Safety Building, for the Code Enforcement Officer, the Community and Economic Development Director, as well as RSU 25. And finally, a presentation which you will find in your packet, was made to the committee in regards to three free sessions that I had the opportunity to attend in Bangor regarding advertising for the town. The first meeting was with Tom Ray at Hussin University, and the final two were with Phil, who is from Tom's office, and were held at WLBC 2, as this was a joint project between those two parties. The end result is that WLBC 2's award-winning production staff will create three two-minute videos for online production, such as the town website, social media pages, and YouTube channels. Also included are two additional 15-second commercials. One two-minute video is to be produced every four months. Now, in order for this to work to its fullest potential, we have to send the right message, provide a key benefit, share a singular message, and be consistent across all of our media, something we're not presently doing. I will be working with the WLBC 2 staff to relay that message. The timing will work out great because we can highlight living in Bucksport, homes, small shops, and schools for our first video. Our second video will be in time for the opening of the new lots in Heritage Park, and can show the, showcase the opportunity to locate in our park. And our third video will be in time for the tourist season and can showcase the beautiful walkway, Silver Lake, and the Miles Lane walking trails. How does this compare to what the town has done for the last two advertisements? This package is valued at $4,995. Resolve R 2015-100, a marketing opportunity with WABI All About Maine, used for similar purposes at a clip of five minutes, but for the summer season only, came in at $7,510. This project highlighted the benefits of living, working, and owning a business in Bucksport. And Resolve R 2015-60 paid $6,290, broken down as $1,650 for pop-up store video production, and $4,640 for commercial airtime, which the commercial aired from November 24th through January 3rd. So this new proposal is for an entire year, and comes in well under what the other advertisements did. We will get three videos that we can showcase and highlight our town.
I understand these videos would be actually on our website too, that people will be able to access?
Yes, through our website, through social media, through our YouTube channel that the town has. There will also, I worked out with WLBC, there will be a banner on their page. So a lot of people will visit the news online, they can click on that banner, and be right directed to our site.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any questions from anybody on that? Yes, sir.
I know you mentioned Miles Lane's trail, so we also have some nice trails out of Silver Lake too, which a lot of people don't know about.
Any other questions? We're going to take this up later down here, aren't we? Are we asking for the money tonight?
No, no, that's just part of the regular budget. He's not.
Okay, all right. Going on to item D, Wilson Hall, Request to Seek Buyers Through an RFP Process. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, Jeff Hammond, Town's Code Officer. About five years ago, shortly after the town became the owner of Wilson Hall, the town put out a request for proposals from developers to rehabilitate and redevelop the property. Part of that process allowed the developers to do a site visit. And I'm not sure of the exact number, but there were probably at least six, maybe 10 people that looked at it. At the time though, the building was boarded up. It was pitch black inside, filthy dirty, full of debris, rotten wood, and about half the building was unsafe to walk in. So it was very difficult to really get a good impression of what the potential that building might have. Last year, with the help from Larry Wall and Emmerick Spooner, we went in and stabilized the collapsing floors and the tower as well. The property was cleaned up to look more presentable. And plexiglass panels that were taken off windows of the library were loaned to us to use to bring daylight back into the building, so we cut out several plywood covering the window and replaced the hole with the plexiglass. So the building now is easy to see, it's easy to walk through, you can walk through the entire building safely, including up into the tower, which was not accessible at all, back when we first had developers look at it. That task of stabilization though, did just that. It stabilized the building from further collapse, but it didn't save the building. The roof still has a lot of leaks in it, and water's still getting in and causing damage. We completed our stabilization efforts about a year ago. So the building has been sitting there for that time, with only a few people looking at it. So I'm thinking that this might be the time now to reach out one more time to see if there might still be an interest from any, anybody to take on the task of saving that building. So I'm asking for your approval to put out an RFP again. I just recently learned however, that BACAS has expressed their renewed interest in the property. I think there's some people here tonight from that, that group that may want to speak to you on, on that property.
Thank you. Anybody here from BACAS would like to speak on this?
Good evening. George Hansen, President of BACAS. We've been interested in Wilson Hall for five years plus. As a matter of fact, we were negotiating with the original owner to purchase the building at one point in hopes of renovating it into an art-type functional building that the town could use, residents of the town could use, whether it be all totally artwork spaces, or whether it be meeting places, perhaps a place to have social gatherings, those types of activities that would make it a hub for the citizens of Bucksport and the owner surrounding area. We started this, David knows, as a subcommittee of the Town Council to study the, the need for an auditorium in the town. And that was, that was a root of us back in 1999. And of course, we do have the Performing Arts Center, so that, that was a very successful venture. Since that, we raised money and put air conditioning into the auditorium. We raised more money to buy a grand piano, which folks get to enjoy at the auditorium. So we've been around quite some time, and we feel that we have a history of being successful in most of our endeavors. And one of those is renovation of Wilson Hall. We view it as a building in the town that has a tremendous amount of history. It's been overlooking the bay for a century or more, and we all feel that it should continue to overlook the bay, only in a more usable way. I think Lisa has a proposal that we put together, that she's going to hand out for your review. And we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here and discuss it with you tonight. We've worked on before the council for, well, about five years. So we feel fortunate to be here tonight, and we really thank you for that opportunity. One of our things, as you look through this, obviously, it's a little bit of who we are and our vision, but one of the phenomenal things that we feel is important is that we are a nonprofit organization. And we are, we do have a 501(c)(3) status with Internal Revenue Service. So we feel that we have great potential to apply to and obtain grants, if you will, to renovate a facility such as Wilson Hall. That's not available to private enterprises. So they have to look at a return on their investment that we don't necessarily have to look at, because we'll be doing it with grant funds and fundraising. That's kind of, I think, in a very brief explanation of who we are and what we're looking to do. And I think there's a lot of interest out there in Wilson Hall, in wanting to see it revived to a useful building for the town of Bucksport and the surrounding areas. Lisa, would you like to add anything at this point?
Yes, I would just like to add that probably about two years ago, there was some interest. I think Don Houghton, and Dick Campbell, and Larry Wall worked very hard to put a group together, and there were a lot of people that were very, very interested in doing, working together. In fact, they were so excited that they did an event right off the bat. They over in Oregon. But then, for whatever reason, they weren't able to keep things going. So we had that list of people who were interested. So we're starting with a group that I'm sure would still be interested in helping with this. So it's not like we're starting from scratch. We're going to take what was going, you know, the fund, phew, the foundation of the people that were there before, and see if they're still interested, so we can hit the ground running.
I think again, the aim of the groups that have come before you before is to rehab this building to a profit-making venture. And I think that I'm not speaking out of term, but as far as I know, none of them have been able to develop a model, you will, or a program that allows them to do that. Which brings us back to the point that I really think that a nonprofit such as BACAS would have the best opportunity to resurrect that building to a useful purpose. And that's our reason for wanting to kind of get that before you folks tonight, so you can think about that. We do our little proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I am one for the jury. Do you ever want to carry a figure what it would cost to put that building the way you'd like to see it?
Oh my goodness, it would be just a speculation at this point. I'm thinking one and a half to two million, to get it back to where it should be. I mean, we're thinking a building that's, you know, perfectly safe environmentally, structurally, accessible, ADA, with proper rooms for displaying artwork, that are environmentally controlled. I mean, you're talking quite a few dollars, but I really think that we're poised to be able to raise the money to do that.
I heard that figure from a business person, one to one and a half, and the numbers just don't work from a business standpoint, as you mentioned. Might be, as you said, different for a nonprofit, or somebody that just has a load of money and wants to do it because it feels good.
Well, we're looking for that person, Robbie.
Any other comments on this? I think you all know that this has been ongoing for several years, through a couple of different councils. We came as close as to one final vote, whether to demolish the building or save it, and I think it was like a four to three vote maybe, to, to continue trying to see if somebody could refurbish it. I think going out for a request for proposals is an option for us. BACAS, you know, if you think you, it sounds like you have to own the property in order to get grants. Well, I don't think, if you talked to the grant people and said, hey, we've got this building that we think we can get, you know, I'm sure the town would be willing to work with you. I don't know if you have to, I don't know if the town is ready to give the building over until you actually get the, the grant to do the work, but I'm sure we can work something else. I, I think the general consensus is that people would like to see that building saved. It's a beautiful building. Like I said, we were this close to having it gone forever, so I think request for proposals is a good start again, and see what's going. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I don't know the history. I'm sure you discussed it before, but it seems like it's, it's a shame that the roof is leaking, it's continuing to deteriorate. I have no idea how much, have we got an estimate on repairing the roof, or patching it enough so it doesn't continue to leak in the meantime?
Yeah, Mr. Houghton I think has some information.
We have access to some numbers from, I don't want to speak.
Dawn, could you come up and speak?
There are some numbers that exist. Depends on what you're going to do, do with the building ultimately, as to whether you make it fully handicap accessible with an elevator.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just really talking about the roof right now.
There is a figure on the roof. It depends what you do in the third floor. I was just going to add to that. Not everybody's been in the building recently. And thanks to the work that's been done, it's now safe to see it. And you can actually see, the last time we went in there, we had lights from the Fire Department, and it was spooky. Now it's a good place to visit, safely. I'd just like to encourage any or all of you to take a look at it in today's town. There are some other potentials. I'd love to work with BACAS.
I think we did have a proposal to remove the cupola, and redo the roof, then maybe either rebuild the cupola and put it back on. And I think at that time, like $140,000, $150,000 was a number I thought was floated around. That was basically just to redo the roof and, and the cupola. But, yes?
There is one thing that I would like to add, is if you Google Wilson Hall video, was it you Jeff that did the can? You wore a can and actually did a physical walkthrough tour? And it, you would just be amazed, but the view from the top of that is just breathtaking. And to see the old carvings that the students actually put into the wood, and, you know, it's just, but it gives you, if you've never been in the building, it gives you a really good solid idea of what it looks like on the interior.
You showed us that one night here, didn't you? Was that the one that you showed us here? Has a great view out looking out over the fort. Oh, at the Alamo, okay.
Is that something that could be put in the request for proposals? Or they could come to a webpage to?
We'll wait for that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Jeff and I, in discussing this, putting this on the agenda, was before BACAS provided their proposal, which came in the day after, or two days after we had posted this on the agenda. In discussing the roof, the, the construction of that building is such that reconstructing the roof to some other, so that the, the support structure for the cupola and things didn't run all the way down through that building, which is what's part of the current roof structure. So it isn't as simple as just slapping something on or taking, it's reconstructing the support structure on the inside of the building to no longer have to support all the way down through, that it trusses the roof in a way that some sort of other, I, I'm not a carpenter, but I understand enough of the fact that it's, that if you're going to put on a completely different structure than what's there, or even try to reconstruct something that goes all the way to the foundation, that six figures is a, is a number, and the first one's not one. You know, it would be probably a couple hundred thousand dollars to, to either reconstruct and redo it because of the size and height, or to, if you want to make it exactly the way it was, to funnel that all the way down through, which limits space utilization.
That's helpful to explain. I mean, I'm picturing replacing slate shingles or whatever.
No, 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 it's none of that.
Keep the water flow going.
Yes, sir.
I would just second what Mr. Houghton said. I had the opportunity to get into that building this week, and the last time I was in that building was probably over five years ago, when people were destroying it and getting in it, into it every night. Air most went through the floor two or three times, but it, it does give you a true respect for that building itself and the inside of it compared to what it looked like then, and the work that's been done now by these guys is tremendous. It gave me a totally different respect for the building, and people making the decisions should really get in there and look at that building, because those, those decisions are crucial. And way back when, when you took that vote, I was sitting there thinking, this is a true public safety issue, and unfortunately, you may need to come down now, but I've changed my mind on that.
Yes, sir.
We need to get in there.
One final one was back when that building was built in 1850. The town of Bucksport, its prominent citizens, put $50,000 of $1,850 into the building. It's the best example of Greek revival in Hancock County. You can take it down, but you can't. You can take it down, but you can't move it back.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, we're just looking for a consensus to go up to RFP? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Thank you, Jeff. Item E, Bucksport Marina Rate Increase Recommendations, Waterfront Committee.
That would be me again. I also chair the Waterfront Committee, and this evening, we met, all three of us, including Peter and the other Paul here at the table. We reviewed the Bucksport Municipal Marina rates going forward into 2017, which looks like this, and we have an agreement on this evening. They're broken into three areas. I know, difficult to see, but if you look at the marina with this being the marina building, this actually, think of it as three fingers that go out, and there are different rates based upon the size of the boats that come in. The second thing is a monthly dockage rate and a transient rate back to those boats that pull in for a night or two and so forth. What makes us unique, not unique, but makes it easier to handle here in Bucksport, is our rates include the electrical hookup, the water hookup, and use of the showerhouse is, it's all encompassing here with the rate structure. So basically, what we have approved tonight and would like to go forward on is, one set of rates will increase, the maximum rate increase is eight percent on a per foot basis and as low as six percent. The monthly dockage rates remain the same. The transient rates, boats up to 40 feet will be a dollar fifty, $1.50 per foot overnight. Believe it or not, that's a rate increase of 50%. We were at a dollar a foot, now we're at a buck and a half. And over 41 feet, it moves up to a dollar seventy-five per foot overnight for a transient rate. That is a rate increase of 40%. Trash removal will be at $2.50 per bag, but not accepted on Tuesdays and Wednesdays when the transfer station is closed. And just as an aside, as a side point, the cruise ship that comes in, in 2017 season, only the Independence, there was a smaller boat and a larger boat. The larger boat will not be coming back. That boat is actually going away. They're building a much larger boat that may, in fact, come into the port with bad weather, safe harbor. That is so long that it may only use a part of the pier and then have to use an anchor on the bow of the boat to keep things here. But the Independence that you've seen here quite often will be back next season, and that's a 238-foot vessel that will dock at the town pier, and that will be charged $2.50 per foot each time they come in. So those are the new rates. We've been able to move through this rather quickly. We have approval from the committee, and we'll be seeking approval of resolve later on. We're not rushing through this, but we did want to get, again, like I said earlier, get the rates established, so people that are leaving this season will know what they'll be looking at, and hopefully gain some bookings rather quickly. Any questions?
Yes.
Can you allow me to incur passenger charge as well for the cruise ship? No other places do that.
That is 180 degrees out of phase with what was happening here, and we discussed it at a meeting. We were actually paying the cruise line $75 per head when they came in. That is not going to go forward.
Seventy-five cents, sir.
Seventy-five cents, yes.
Seventy-five cents, sorry. I think we're in the same school that Don has when it comes to putting a decimal point in. Seventy-five cents a head.
I was going to say, wow.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't there a concern about the water they used also? That the town provides water for that cruise ship?
The volume of water used, because we're billed and we, is much less than, the total water bill for the town dock, which is what has now been separated out from that, I believe was around $700 for the year, and that is more than compensated for the, the total cruise ship bills for the year is around $4,000. And they're not the only ones who use water on the dock. You know, others use it as well.
Yeah, I believe every slip on the dock has water and electricity. So that's all included in their rate.
Any other comments on the recommendations from the Waterfront Committee? If not, we're going to move on to item E, F, Municipal Review Committee Board of Directors, candidate nomination, Town Manager.
Okay, we received a candidate nomination form from the Municipal Review Committee. And under the terms of the Municipal Review Committee, only the first five applicants will get considered to be voted on by. And since the town, the council made the decision to go with the Municipal Review Committee for a long-term disposal of solid waste post-2018, I submitted my name in nomination for that board because something that's going to be this expensive and this interesting in terms of development, I believe you would be well-served to have a spokesperson on the group. That doesn't mean, number one, you can't say, no, we think that's a bad idea, and I can withdraw my name, which I would be happy to do, or that, number two, that I would even get elected because it's an election from among the towns that, and there are other people running, including existing members who are running for their term again. But in, as I said, the reason that I submitted it was because only five get considered, and if I waited, the five spots would be taken up and we wouldn't have a chance to.
Do you know if you made the ballot?
You can't make the ballot if you're not one of the first five.
Do you know if you were one of the first five, though?
Yes, I do.
You do?
Perfect.
So we don't have any, we can go forward with this?
You can either say, call them and tell them, because they accept these until October 19th, or until they get to five. And so...
But you made the final slate.
I made the five, unless you say don't. If you say, take your name out, then they will still have an opportunity.
I recommend that we have the Town Manager continue her process.
We have motion seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Yeah.
Sue, could you explain more about this Municipal Review Committee? I'm not that familiar with it.
The Municipal Review Committee is the group that the town is currently a member of and has been since 1998, '89. I'm dyslexic with the year, but they have been the oversight group between the town and the disposal entity of PERC, while the, the towns, for disposal of the town's solid waste. And the arrangement between PERC, the MRC, and the towns expires in March of 2018, when the advantageous AMRA contracts with PERC expire. And after a spirited round of discussions earlier this year, the council determined, and a very close vote, after a lot of discussion, that it would move forward with the MRC proposal to dispose of waste at the Fiber Right Project in Hampden, which is currently being sued by PERC. But the Municipal Review Committee is governed by a Board of Directors elected from the membership of communities that belong, and that's who decides what they do and how they do it. And this is an important issue for the town of Bucksport, and that's why.
I have just a quick question. How much of your time would be taken out by this position?
They meet quarterly. The Municipal Review Committee meets quarterly. They have subcommittee meetings, if you're appointed to or choose to serve on those, that could take up a meeting every other month. The development of this project, this Fiber Right Project, may take some time. Were I elected, it could take a day, a month to devote to this effort.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to item G, Public Works Director Appointment. Susan.
I put a memo in your packet, and the purpose of it is to notify you that I've selected Jay Lamphar to serve as our new Public Works Director for the town of Bucksport. We were fortunate to get a number of applications from some very qualified individuals with varying skill sets, and the decision was not a simple one. However, I will say that in the, in the final analysis, Jay brings a great deal to the table in terms of institutional knowledge, in terms of service to the community, in knowledge of our infrastructure, and has exhibited during the interim phase while we've been the acting director, what I'm sure for him was somewhat like taking a drink from a fire hose, in terms of all the things that he encountered that go along with this position, because the oversight is not just of highway, it's the transfer station and assisting with sewer and being part of the waterfront and all sorts of other things. But it also includes the budgeting paperwork, operation of Petrovend, and all sorts of systems that are, while were, you know, he was there, he was not privy to those operations under the former director, so those, some of that is a learning curve. It would have been a learning curve for anyone that we hired. I like to think it's less for Jay, because he already knows our remaining systems. The, my plan moving forward is not to replace the position of Foreman, that with the crew, the size that we have, that one supervisory position with a backup is, and when I say backup, for when he's on vacation, when he's away, when he's, who's, someone has to be in charge when somebody's not there. And that that person would be Matt Pierce, who is our mechanic and who's resident in the garage the majority of the time, does the ordering, does a lot of training stuff now that we actually have a computer there where the people can get their training, would be second-in-command, and that I would advertise for a driver position for the department, which I believe can fit into other, as we move forward in discussions of waterfront and other things, that the position will have value. But it also keeps us whole for the purpose of current operations. Jay has administrative responsibilities. He will also have some working responsibilities as well. It's a, it's a hybrid of a position as opposed to strictly administrative. There is a great deal of administrative that goes along with it, but he also has a skill set to be able to, when necessary, plow the parking lot or step up and do those kind of things. And I, I think that that brings a, it ties in well with what I've talked to you about in the transition of the highway section to a maintenance as opposed to a construction organization. And when I get to my manager's report, you'll see things like the report from the post office carriers about how much roadside work we need to do to bring the shoulders up and some of these other things that have been, that need to happen. So anyways, Jay is here this evening, but I'm pleased that he decided to apply, and I look forward to working with him as our new director.
Congratulations.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda items. First one being, approve, resolve, R, 2017-23, to approve payment requisition number 13 for the sewer treatment plan upgrade project in the amount of, wow, $1,62,769.28 to be paid from the $7.8 million temporary financing loan.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to approve, resolve, R, 2017-24, to set the 2017 rates for the use of the town docks and town marina.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to approve, resolve, R, 2017-25, to approve the three-year note with Camden National Bank at an interest rate of 1.75% to finance a purchase of a 2017 freightliner truck and to sign legal papers related to said purchase. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? This is a new venture on how we're going to stop purchasing some of our equipment, so we don't have any one big payment in one year. It's over a period of time. This is a recommendation from our Town Manager. It actually will benefit the community. So again, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, Town Manager's Six-Month Probationary Review. The town council may hold this item in executive session or persuading of MRS A 1405, Section 6A, if the council so chooses.
I make a recommendation that the mayor and the Town Manager go over the evaluations that the Town Council did and set it for an executive session next, at our next meeting.
Okay. I would like to ask for any public input at this time to help us with the six-month valuation. We do have evaluations that have come in from the council, but I would like to open it up to the public for their recommendations or comments on the six-month probationary period from Town Manager Susan Lassad. Anything from the public? Yes, ma'am, step, can you step up, please?
I'm Kathy James with the Lighthouse Art Center that's going into town, and I just want to say Sue has been fabulous to work with, very supportive of the new business in town, so I give her great kudos.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Whitney. And I just wanted to mention that in all of my contacts with Susan, she's been very positive, very helpful, and I would like to relay something similar to what Kathy said. Diane at Huckleberry's has complimented the town and its management on how friendly and welcoming they have been. And every time I step into the store, she tells me, oh, everybody's been wonderful. And, you know, when they did the sidewalk tour, they were very impressed that Susan was on the tour with them, and so, two thumbs up.
There you go. Thank you. Any other comments?
Leslie Wahlbacker, Executive Director of the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to congratulate you guys, because you hired Sue. Congratulations. What a step forward we've made. And she's been amazing to work with. She was at, in my office just the other morning there, meeting about efficiency main programs. She's truly involved in this community, and it's nice to see. Good job, guys.
Yes, sir, step up.
Hopefully, Sue, I can read this, when you ended this meeting today. Sue, Sue has done an outstanding job. I mean, as a department head, she's always available. If she steps out of town, she always tells us how to get ahold of us if we have any questions. She's just a joy to work with. I mean, she's very supportive, but yet there's things that need to be done, she doesn't hesitate in telling them. I think we have a very good Town Manager here, and as you can see, how these meetings are going. are going, and I think it's great. Just make sure there isn't any trash talk, I'm not committing.
Well, my name is Chris Johnson, living in Bucksport. I just wanted to share some experiences that I've had in the past few weeks. Be as quick as possible. One was in Millbridge, had a meeting of the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, everybody knew who Susan Lassard was. Quite impressed in complimenting us on having her here. One was on top of Great Pond Mountain in Orland, when I had a representative from a nearby town tell us how fortunate we were. He was climbing up there, I was representing the group, how fortunate we were to have Susan here. I was at the Mitchell, George Mitchell Sustainability Center up at the University of Maine in Orin, when they found out I was from Bucksport. After a seminar, everybody came and wanted to know how fortunate, how we managed to get Susan Lassard here in this town. So there was also an auguster at the Aging Summit, some of those folks, people reminded me how fortunate we were to have Susan Lassard as our town manager. So, and I understand Rich's heard things similar in some of his travels, so I just wanted to relay how fortunate we really are to have her here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pearl Swenson from Bucksport, and first of all, I believe I speak for all of those on the committee of the Senior Resource Committee, and especially the share, the show you care campaign. Without Susan's assistance, you know, as far as the walkabout that we had on Main Street, and calling a meeting, and the support from all the council members, you know, I don't know how much longer it would have taken to see the improvements that Susan made possible. And also at the AARP convention, Susan was there in spite of family difficulties in her family that was going on, she showed up, and when it was her turn to accept the red recognition for AARP, she began explaining about what Bucksport had done in regard to age-friendly communities. The first thing she said is, "Well, Bucksport's been working on this for 25 years, quiet." And she went down through the list of things that Bucksport has accomplished, and it was very impressive, and I think we are very, very fortunate to have Susan, and I've seen a change in the demeanor of the council as someone that's watching you week after week under her direction, so I really think that her evaluation should be an A+. Thank you.
Any other comments? There is, PD, I make a recommendation.
Make a motion and a second already. To go next, to let you guys review that in the next meeting, something executive.
Okay, her and I to review these, then go into executive session. We have a, a motion and a second to have the town manager and myself review the evaluations from all the town council members and to go into executive session at the next council meeting to have a discussion around those evaluations. Is that the way you want it? All those in favor? Opposed? I'd like to do it right now, but that's why I'm opposing it, because, you know, I've read the recommendations, I work, I talk with Susan almost daily, I think she gets tired of seeing me come in the office, but we always have a good conversation. I have no doubt in my mind that we have the right person to lead us into the, into the future here, and the town's in good shape under her guidance and also the council's guidance, and that's basically why I'd like to do it right now, but anyway, all those in favor? We already went through that, right?
Opposed, remember?
Right, I opposed. Right, anyway, we'll bring it forward.
Easy, easy. They go on the same page.
Yeah. I just don't want her going home thinking that she's in trouble. Yes sir?
Yes sir. Can we please take up an agenda item not on for the council from the waterfront committee meeting for Ms. Kathy James?
Do we have this?
I don't know that we need to do an agenda item, I think that we just can tell her the outcome of the committee meeting, and that's how we're gonna move.
You're talking about the tree?
Yes.
Is that what she said? Yes.
I don't know that that takes a vote. I think we can just say.
Just before we move on to the.
Yes.
I just want to, the typical of the way things go since our current town manager has joined us as interim and now formal town manager, you know, when we did this thing on the Economic Development Committee about going forward with this letter to Maine Maritime Academy to express our interest, and it's an important project to them and, you know, to them and their stakeholders, I mean, this took place on a Tuesday night, and we said, "Hey, we'd like to expedite something out," and got ahold of Sue. The next morning at 7:30, I wrote an email, and she already fired back before she even got into the office, and then by Friday night, then she asked for feedback, that was Saturday morning, and the following Monday, less than seven days, boom, the thing was out the door and copies to everybody and so forth, and that just seems to be the way things are going typically in the town now. We're not watching grass grow and taking forever to make a decision, it, boom, you know, and gets expedited through and so forth, and the performance appraisal that the mayor is speaking to is actually a four-page document that we're, that we've been invited to fill in and covers everything from leadership and public relations and employee relations and, you know, the input that we've had, I've had from the team upstairs too, they were all over me the other day about, they just enjoy working for her upstairs, so anyway, I'm done selling, but thank you.
All right.
Well, the, the important part of this is, whether it's me or whoever's sitting here, is that your process includes a substantial evaluation at six months before you buy the car to make sure that it's the model and operating in the way that best fits your I'm having a great time, and it's a great community and, but what is important is, is how the elected officials are able to work with whoever sits in this chair, and that you have a process for evaluating that in a real way so that you never get to the point where the wheels come off the bus. Okay? So that's the, the whole, how many pages and all that is, because if it really wasn't working, even if I thought it was great, if somebody else didn't, it, then it's, it's best to know that now and not after probation's over and the whole thing gets awkward. Yes, I know. Your process is what it is.
We are fortunate too that you had eight or nine months here as an interim manager, so actually, so actually you had more than a six-month probationary period really, but anyway, thank you very much. Let's go on to.
Do we want to answer Rich's question now? Can we do that, so she, she wants to leave?
Sure. Waterfront. Waterfront. Hi, back to me again. So, had a complete group of us tonight for the waterfront committee, and town manager also sat in. What we'd like to do Kathy, in regard, the request came in about the, there's a very mature birch tree right in front of the property that, to do something about the tree for more visibility, and that one side of the pendulum could be all the way over to take the tree down, which we weren't keen on, but the other idea that we came to a unanimous agreement on is, we'd like, we'd like the idea of getting an arborist in to trim the tree, and not trim the tree in the way that the line crews do as you've seen over at Fort Knox where they whack an owl out of it or other properties around town, but I can tell you what, and I shared with the rest of the waterfront committee, at my home, I had a lot of mature birch trees, and I have trimmed them, they go 40 feet in the year, and I have trimmed them some six to eight feet off the ground so I get lots of visibility to see what's going on, and also to have the arborist take a look at if there's anything that can be due to form the tree, cut things down, and the fact that we're going into fall and through now and next spring, there'll be no trees on the, and then come back to us next year and say, "Hey, that worked," or "We need to go a little further." So, sound like a plan?
Mm-hmm. I'm hoping. We just, we just laid the idea out.
And, and we thought long and hard about it, and everybody has been over, and to see the back of that, that building with the walkway and everything, it's on a scale of one to 10, it's a 25, it came out, it's gorgeous, so.
It's gonna be awesome. Lots of parties.
So, yes, Tim.
Paul, when you have the arborists come in, there's other trees along the waterfront too should be looked at.
That's what the plan was.
We talked about that too.
I knew you should ask me to.
Way ahead of you.
You're still here?
For those on the committee, did I miss anything?
Perfect.
Okay, we're gonna go on to item nine, resignations, appointments and assignments. I don't believe we have anything.
Tim Emery's getting close.
Okay, item 10, approve a quick claim deed for Dale Keys at 633 State Route 46, reference account 1157.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have, we have a copy of it either.
Yeah, it's the, it's, was it the mobile home?
The mobile home is now gone. We have a motion and a second to approve the settlement of the quick claim deed. Anything from the public on this one? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're gonna go on to item 11, which is a town manager's report.
I'll put yours. The Public Works Director and I met with a representative of Zero Surt Recycling on September 28th to determine what the town would need to do in order to be able to move forward with such a program. He will be providing an outline of equipment necessary and suggestions for organization of the site that will be used as part of the RFP. Very interesting, if we go with this and get rid of balers and all that stuff, a compactor for this use could be put inside one of the bays and therefore out of the elements in the same way that the trash one is, and that it's not necessary to purchase a compactor, you, we can lease them for a monthly rate that includes all maintenance, so that if the compactor doesn't work, we're not going out to find somebody to repair it on our own. It's a, it's a reasonable, and it also gives you flexibility if you decide to change, and if we can put it inside the building, we don't have to do any construction of concrete pads or those kind of things outside, so we'll have more on that by the next meeting. The representative from Maine Municipal Association Leader Program came on September 28th for their annual inspection of town facilities and policies and training and safety records. Attainment and ongoing maintenance of the leader certification through them, they're our property and casualty insurer, saves the town nearly $5,000 a year in premium costs. Representatives from the Department of Labor inspected town operations on August 30th and 31st as part of the process of obtaining SHAPE designation, which is a Department of Labor designation, and that allows the town to avoid the surprise inspection by the Department of Labor every five years with a potential that carries for fines and penalties. Instead, the town becomes certified by showing that operations consistently meet the standards necessary. I attended a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce with representatives from area communities in regard to a program being offered that allows persons who meet certain qualifications to receive $1,000 worth of energy improvements such as installation of LED bulbs, sealing windows indoors, wrapping pipes, et cetera, for $50 payment. The local care program has donated $500 to act as the $50 deposit for 10 sites in their service area. Persons who own their home and receive heating assistance or have a combined home and land valuation of less than $80,000, or who have received general assistance, or who live in a mobile home are eligible for the program. There is a substantial amount of money available in this program, and for more information, you can call me at the town office or Leslie Wambacher at the Chamber of Commerce. This is a really good program for a very low amount of money, with some offset already provided by donations. Received a list from the local postal carriers of sections of town roads that need shoulder work done to make mail delivery and overall vehicle operations safer. The list also contains sections of state roads, and we are notifying the state in writing of the areas identified on their roads. MJ will be working to address the issues with shoulders that were identified on the town roads. We've had complaints that the, it's pavement and then gap and then nothing, the shoulders need to be addressed in a number of areas. The contractor will begin work on the project, the concrete sidewalk project, to replace many sections of that on Monday, October 3rd. They estimate that they will begin pouring concrete by Wednesday, October 5th. The steps to replace those in front of the stained glass shot between the street and the sidewalk have been ordered but are a special order and may take some time to arrive. And finally, it says, "I will be, but I did today. I submitted a grant application for a broadband planning grant to the Eastern Maine Development Foundation, and in hopes that we get funded in order to assist with the cost of this important project. Broadband access is key to the location of residents and businesses as we move forward." This grant is one to be one of four pilot communities selected to, for an implementation product, process for broadband, so.
Is that nationwide or is that just the main one?
This is the main one. This is through Eastern Maine Development and Acxiom Technologies that are picking four communities to act as the pilots for this, so.
Can't think of a better one.
Our application is.
Thanks.
Okay, item 12, to set public hearings or hold public hearings and approve any licenses or permits. I believe we have one application for the farmer's market.
And.
And. It's actually two on there.
Hello again. So what are we doing first? Which one, which one you guys want to do? What do you want to ask me about first? I first want to tell you guys that sadly, my market manager for the farmer's market couldn't make it this evening, so I don't have all the information necessary because this is all new for me. She, on the other hand, is a market manager at the Bayside Market in Northport and the Ohio Street Market in Bangor. There, at least Bayside, they had a craft brewer that was a vendor, so this is how this process has started. To me, it seems kind of horse before the cart, but I guess it all makes sense to the state, because I go to you guys first. The vendor themselves has to go to the state separately, then we, with your documentation, goes to the state, and then they put us all together. So, that's where we are. We're at this part where I'm coming to you first.
Isn't that surprising?
Yeah, shock, right? No doubt. It's like, why? Okay. So, where I feel really lacking and ignorant is that I don't even recall the vendor's name, because Rose was the one that was working with them, so, I'll tell you that. I just know that they're a craft brewer vendor at other farmer's markets, so I'm not sure what the name of their craft brewer is.
In a way, that I understand it, you approve, Sean, that they can sell it, but you can't consume it on the.
Correct. Right, exactly. It's like a grocery store buy is the idea behind it, except they're sitting in your farmer's market doing that, so.
And that they're still under the same laws, that they have to check IDs and all that, right?
Correct. Exactly, and that's why they have to go to state themselves. The interesting thing that I thought was interesting, because I thought, well, because they already vend at other markets, they have, you know, they have that license, they have to ask for each market they vend at, so, which I think is very interesting. So they pay, the vendor pays a fee to state, the market does not pay a fee to state, but we still have to apply to state, and then they put us together.
Is there any liability to the town? I mean, you know, usually if you're buying beer at a store or consuming it at a restaurant or something like that, the liability is in. Is there any liability to the town? I mean, you know, usually if you're buying beer at a store or consuming it at a restaurant or something like that, the liability is in the property owner.
Is in the property owner.
This is, this is town property, is there any...
There's no consumption, so there should be no liability.
Right. That was my understanding of it because there's no consumption, so.
That's true. I ran the background check and application for sale and not consumption of other property.
So, if somebody popped one open, I'd have to call Sean. Call you up and be like, um, someone's opening one up here, so.
I move to approve the application for farmer's market.
Okay, we have motion and a second, approve the application for a license for craft beer and wine to be sold at the farmer's market. Anything from the public on this? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Number two.
Ghost Port. It's that time again. First, these are the signatures of businesses that would be affected. I can't keep that written down. Whatever's on work. Well, when we closed the road down last year, you guys did approve that and we learned things, Rachel?
Yes, we did.
Yes, I did. I learned I need to hire somebody for that time period. So, I'm gonna do that and work that out and it was, yeah, I think that overall it really was successful. This is this year's schedule, you guys can pass those around. We're gonna make some tweaks to the schedule because of the things we learned. For instance, because the race was so popular up on Main Street compared to when it was behind the building, they were four to five deep on the sidewalk and our movie let out and they couldn't get out of the building. We changed the time of the movie. Then trunk retreat started and there was over 400 kids that came through and they spilled out into the street, so we're moving that as well. So, when the road is closed, it is only closed for the coffin race and then we're gonna close it from 1:00 to 3:30 in hopes that that will cover all of our time bases, getting an extra duty officer on for the central side, street closure. A volunteer and barricades can certainly do the mechanic street side because all they gotta do is turn. The central street's just a little bit more complicated because some cars can come up to where the barricade is on the other side of Community Pharmacy so that people can get their prescriptions sold, so, that's our...
And we're having a late night movie with beer and alcohol sales?
Well, since the Alamo, since the Alamo has a beer and alcohol license, yes. That, honestly, though, we have...
Time to spill out in the road.
Nah, they never have. They've been doing it now.
Chief, do you have any issues?
No.
You're all... I'd be all right.
I also wanna thank you to the ones that were here last year for, for the approval of that because the difference in the amount of attention that Ghost Port has had this year and the interest in the coffin race, it's doubled, which I just am like, wow. And all it took was moving that race from the parking lot to the street. I mean, that's pretty neat, so, thanks. We appreciate that.
We have a motion and a second, approve the special amusement...
Event hall, I don't know.
Or event thing for Buckwood Bear, Chamber of Commerce for Ghost Ports. Anything from the public on this? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay.
Let's go.
We're on to hold a public hearing, consider amendments to the Buckwood Town Code, Chapter 12, Traffic and Safety, to be adopted, such ordinance being proposal, additional packing, prohibitions on Franklin Street. Is it?
Yeah. We're proposing off Franklin Street.
You got, you got a recommendation from...
Go to public hearing, yeah.
Oh, is that right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the public hearing open, consider amendment to the Buckwood Town Code, Chapter 12, Traffic and Safety, adding prohibitions of packing on Franklin Street. Public hearings open. I believe this is a move to prohibit packing from...
It was a safety, a safety issue that was identified with vehicles being on the hill going up on Franklin. There was basically, was it between mechanic and...
Mechanic and second.
Yeah.
Second mechanic. We started out with just up the hill, but then we talked about all around down to Second.
And the Second Street where the Reed School is?
Yeah, I think that's the one. Yeah.
Right past the cemetery.
Down, down below that.
Close down over the hill.
It's the next one past the cemetery.
Any comments, public, on this? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanna say it is terrible. Very dangerous. From experience.
Do you allow parking on one side of the road or double? None. None, period. That's very good.
Yeah, this is the changed language is just to add, item F, parking is prohibited on Franklin Street between Mechanic Street and Second Street.
Okay, any further comments from the public? This is a public hearing.
What, what things are there that cause all this extra parking there? Why are they, why are they parking there?
Apartments, apartments.
Apartments, yeah. It's basically a few apartment offices there. I did stuff this week and talked to a few of the people that are parking there, told them about the hearing and I think they wanna voice their opinion and should be, yes, it is the apartment offices in there. And there is parking in back of these places. There is adequate parking there, you say, out back.
This is just a amendment to the packing regulations, section F, it just says, packing is prohibited on Franklin Street between Mechanic Street and Second Street. Any further from the public?
No, no other sections of the street are a problem. I mean, why not for, I don't know, I've seen a lot of times coming down from Central, a lot of vehicles parked along that side of the street. That doesn't...
What, what we talked about in the committee meeting was it's that, it's going up the hill, you've got people coming down the other side of the hill, you know, on that going up Franklin by McDonald's. And then as you're going around towards Second, you got a blind, you know, you've got some blind areas that make it, and the road narrows through there, so. Even turning out of McDonald's, in either direction. The other areas, it, it hasn't come up as a, as an issue, but we felt that there was adequate visibility even with people parking for church and those sorts of things.
In the ordinance, there's exceptions for Sundays.
It's limited for...
Not from the area you got to open up near the church.
Right.
There's exceptions on Sundays.
Anything else from the public? Okay, public hearing closed. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have motion and a second, approve the amendment to the packing regulations. Anything further from the public? From the council? What?
The only thing I will say is I did meet with the now Highway Foreman, we've been up through there looking, the road sign and then we've gone over that and looked at what's gonna be down there. There may be some cost to that. He didn't know what he had for signage at the shop, but we will have to look at that when we're electing him on.
Okay, on this, will be, will there be like an awareness period or will be tickets?
We, we're overly fair with our parking tickets. I, I have more people come in and explain things about parking tickets than I do speeding tickets, so, I have been up there and talked to the, the people that park there most of the time so they're aware that it's coming and the signage will definitely let them know, but we're, we're pretty fair about parking.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, set a public hearing date for repealing and updating Appendix A through D of the Town General Assistance Ordinance. Got to set a date for that?
The date of the next council meeting would be...
Can you put that on the next council meeting date, Kathy? Okay. Okay, let's go on to item 13, discussion items, not on...
You have to vote to...
We'll go take them.
Vote to set the hearing date.
Okay.
Vote to set the hearing. Second.
Billy, we have motion and a second to set the hearing date, public hearing date for updating Appendix A through D of the Town General Assistance Ordinance. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for council or the public. Any discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to give you an update on the last of three latest violations I brought to your attention several meetings ago. This one dealt with the dilapidated building on Federal Street. You allowed the property owner until this date to remove the, the barn and I'm pleased to report that he has done that. He demolished the barn a few days ago and the site's been cleaned up so that the violation has been resolved.
Thank you. Any other discussion items from the public? From the council?
I just wanna echo, I think Rich mentioned the, the block party out at the, the Rod and Gun Club and it was really a, a great job by Rich and a number of those committee members on the heart and soul and, and the people, but most importantly, the people that attended. Jim was out there. It was really interesting to hear some of the stories, especially from somebody who grew up in town, from that community out there and what a neat, a neat time it was. It was really interesting and around 75 people, as Rich said, and I just wanna congratulate Rick and, uh, Rich and the group that put that together and it came out really, really nice. Lots of food and a lot of camaraderie.
Any other discussion items? If not, we're gonna go on to item 14, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignments and scheduling of committee meetings. The first one is to set a sewer committee meeting to discuss staffing operations of Main Water contract for operation of secondary treatment facility. Who's the chairman of that?
Joe.
Joe. Joe is, okay.
Could we schedule one before the next? Our current contract with Main Water expires at the end of this, it expires in 2017. We will at that same time be taking on the new treatment plant operation and we need to talk about how, if you want to continue with the Main Water staffing pattern or do something alternative because that, the contract that they put forward for us is going to go up based on the additional work needed, so I need a committee meeting to talk about what your options are.
You wanna set that for 6:00 PM before the next council meeting?
Sure.
What is the next council meeting? 13th?
13th?
Yes.
6:00 PM? Will that be enough time?
It's an hour if we start it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, item B is set a finance committee meeting to discuss updates to the Petrovene Fuel System. Is that what it's called?
Yep, Petrovene.
Fuel System at the Highway Garage and CD rate investments. Who's the chairman of the finance committee? Peter, you want that? Got a date?
Is there a possibility that we could do this on October 6th? It's, it's the week before the coun, the Thursday before the council meeting.
What time?
Thursday?
I'm on that, right?
Yeah.
I don't think I'm gonna be in Southern, am I? No, I'm on that.
I think it's the 3:00.
Yeah, I might be able to make it back by time. I'm coming from Portland that day. I think I can make...
I mean, do we need to do Thursday? Is there a better day?
We could do Wednesday. Is there...
I went to Academy all week.
Until what time?
Wow, it's supposed to be 8:00.
Yeah, they have like two.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
I mean, probably, I mean, if we did 6:30, 7:00, I could do it. I'll be back. I can wait for my phone.
I think I could do that. Any day, any day that week, I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, I'm at the Academy all week, so I could, any day that week as long as it's... I think Wednesday, Wednesday or 6:30.
Is Wednesday 6:30?
Yeah.
And the only reason I need to, there, there are CDs that have come due, we...
Does that give us enough time though? Is that within a week? Don't we have to? Cause it's Thursday.
Yeah, it has to be Thursday.
What's that?
Doesn't have, doesn't need to be a week, seven days? I don't think so.
Committee meeting?
I can make, I can make 6:30 on Thursday.
Committee meetings, not, not...
Not caps on this. This is a committee meeting. Yeah, we have, I put four CDs up to bid that are coming through and they're in their 10-day window after tomorrow. I wanna talk to the committee about...
So, Wednesday 6:30?
Yeah.
That works?
You have a Wednesday 6:30.
Got it? Kathy, Wednesday of 6:30. Okay.
Paul, you're the chairperson of the sewer committee, not Joe.
I am?
Uh-huh.
Jesus, who did that?
Well, we already got the meeting set.
The 13th at 6?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
I'll be chairing.
There you go. All right, item 15 is adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.